Twenty minutes and it just, it shut down and then thirty-eight minutes later it was still on the blue screen, so I was like, well.
Push five all the way up, can you hear that? Okay.
All right. Go ahead and call this meeting to order, it is 5:03 PM, June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, roll call.
Daryl Jones.
Jenna Darling here.
Steven Morris here. All right. Could we all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
I'd like to add in new hire, uh, yeah, new hires before resignation, because it's usually put on there, but for some reason it is not, so it would be before resignations. Please. That's it for me.
Can we add under non-public, um, C as well, briefly?
So ninety-one dash A colon three two C?
Yes.
C is in cap?
Yes, please.
All right. Roll call vote for approval.
Daryl Jones, aye.
Senior, aye.
Jenna Darling, aye.
Steve Morris, aye. All right, so those two adjustments. We will open up for public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment? All righty. That will move us on to approval of minutes public, May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. I have a motion.
I'll move the minutes, the public minutes of May twenty-fifth.
One second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Mr. Spalding abstains. All right, the, moving on to the next, we have the non-public minutes for May twenty-fifth.
I move the non-public minutes to be twenty-fifth.
Mr. Jones seconds, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. All right, we'll turn it over to Mr. Emery for the student representative report.
So, I don't really have a report tonight, but I wanted to take this time to thank all of you for the opportunity that I've had here. I've learned so many things about our school, our town, and how things are run through this, and this was just an incredible experience for me to be able to have. And you guys are the ones that helped make it enjoyable every single time that I came in here, even if I didn't want to sometimes. So, thank you guys so much. Thank you for being creative with the minutes. Some of them have been pretty funny. Um, I don't have a whole lot else, thank you guys.
Thank you, Steven. Thank you. Good luck. Yes, sir. Mr. Spalding.
But I think the enjoyment is more on our part. You came in, uh, it appeared you were gonna take your shirt off. I was in wonderment of where it was gonna go next. But you, uh, you did fine, your presentations. You, uh, you will do very well in life. And, uh, and thank you for showing us that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we'll move on to information action items. First up is changing hours at Richards, eight fifteen to three PM.
Yes, so tonight I'm asking the board for approval to change the school hours at Richards from eight fifteen AM to two fifty PM, uh, excuse me, from eight fifteen to two fifty, to eight fifteen to three. This is adding on ten minutes of additional instructional time.
And is that just for last period or just spread throughout?
Well, they'll spread it throughout, they'll, they'll...
So it'll just add on?
Yes, yeah.
Did this all work out, I'm assuming with the union, I think last time you asked, you asking permission to talk with the union, right?
Yes.
You said no downside?
No, I just see good sides to it, it's, um, we won't have, we worked on a time with, with Caleb, because at first we wanted to do a different time, but then it interfered in the morning. But in the afternoon, he said the three o'clock time would work fine. At one time we wanted to do it earlier, but it wouldn't have made, wouldn't have worked, and so this time it gives the flexibility and the availability for buses to be able to do their thing. It, um, allows the teachers to, to come in and do their thing and stay a little bit late with our kids, so this way our children have a little bit more instructional time during the day. And is, this was already discussed with the Richard staff, their principal did have the discussion with them.
Got a motion?
I'll move that Richards can change their time as noted here.
Second. All those, are any discussion, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Don't tell my son.
Abstain. Motion passes. All right, next we have update on the CTE renovation.
So I'm just gonna give you a quick overview what has happened in the last couple of days. Ed was able to reach Eric from the Bureau of Community Relationship, uh, Recreation Division of Parks and Rec. And so that was a, that was a huge gain for us, because he actually responded back to our email. And so what they have done is this, he had, he gave the school in the town two dates, because he wants to actually come here, go to the land, the area that we're talking about, and have a conversation with it, and he gave us two dates of Wednesday, June twenty-eighth at ten, or Wednesday, July fifth at ten. The district has already responded with their time, and we're looking to do it Wednesday, June twenty-eighth at ten, because we figure the sooner we do it, the better. And so we are just waiting to hear back from what the town's response is, and then we will move forward. So this is a huge step, this is a huge step in the right direction, so.
Appreciate, uh, you guys stay on top of that. We've talked about it kind of ad nauseam, but it's important for us to, to make sure we don't miss another time act.
Right, and I might add too, that I've contacted, uh, three different appraisers qualified to do the appraisals. Of course, we need to have the identified property, uh, first, so that, um, they can come here and do the appraisals for both of them at the same time. So until that's identified, I can't actually arrange for the appraisal to be done, so. It is all in this town's, um, court at this point.
Yes, so Eric did respond a couple of times that this is the town's thing, that he really should be talking to the town, so he did mention that a few times to us. But he also said that, um, he's looking forward to see what the town is proposing. In the meantime, the site visit should be scheduled and should not be reliant on the town having a final plan. So he wants to, he said, uh, let's submit these dates. So there has to be no plan in place or anything as of right now, he just wants to come out on these days and start the discussion and let us know exactly what he, what needs to be done. I did talk with Ed and say that, um, myself and, um, Steve would be present at that meeting. That was my question. So I, because I will not be, I'm not available to attend on the twenty-eighth, but I would rather it happen when I'm not here, just to move it along, so I didn't know if you needed a court to slip forward here. I'm assuming not.
I think it's just gonna be like informational.
Yeah, I better not attend, then wake up another nupia ball.
That's why I said Steve.
It's all fun and games and so on.
Until Bert shows up.
Well, let's take a look.
All right, and then, so, thank you for that update, we'll move on to the update on the bus bar.
Yes, okay. So we met this morning to discuss the items the school would like to have added into the agreement. The select board stated that we already have a lease, which is the ninety-nine years for a dollar, so that was great, it was a very productive meeting. The select board will generate an agreement, they're gonna send it to me, and then I'm gonna send it to the school board, and then we're gonna set up another meeting to discuss the terms. A date has not been set at this time. We have been told that we can make, we can begin to make any necessary upgrades, there should be any issues with that. And I just wanted to say thank you to Jim, Barry, and Keith. Again, I said, as I said earlier, it was a very productive meeting. And it was, it was on NCTV, so anyone that didn't get to view it can go ahead on and view it.
Even if they couldn't hear it?
Even if they couldn't hear it.
The volume, the volume was having problems.
It's getting better, but we're working on the volume.
Well, at least you'll be able to see people smiling.
We did.
Not Bert from what I heard.
Tonight is like pick-on-Bert night, I think.
All right, we'll, uh, we'll get a target, get some darts.
Just gotta look behind the smile for the meeting, that's right.
No, it was, it was, I think it was good, it's, we're moving forward, and, um, that's the big thing, is that we, we got the, we're moving forward.
Yep.
I guess that's the best way to put it. Any other comments?
We'll wait, see what the contract says.
I like it. Patience.
Patience. I've been told it's a virtue, but I don't have.
All right, if we don't have any other comments, we'll move into the item D, change in transportation route and students eligible to ride the bus.
Yeah, so I'm looking for the school board's approval to, to do some, a little bit of changing here with the, um, transportation. So according to RSA one eight nine six, transportation of pupils. The local stu, school district shall furnish transportation to all pupils in grades one through eight, who live more than two miles from the school in which they are assigned. This is a statutory and constitutional requirement, it's obligation of all public schools in the state of New Hampshire. So what we are proposing is for the elementary schools to be eligible to ride the bus, they must live greater than one mile of their designated school. And the same for the middle school and high school. In order for them to be eligible, they must live greater than one mile of their designated school. Now, of course, we do take into consideration any safety hazards, right, so if there's no sidewalks, or it's a bad area, or there's something going on, you know, that we, that, um, we do take that into consideration. So I'm looking for the approval to change to those.
So what are we doing now?
If I can let Caleb speak on that?
Could you come up to the podium?
I think it's just everybody gets to ride the bus.
So, right now we currently take any students right now, we, this, they're there, we take, uh, right now it's taking a toll, conceding. Um, a lot of other schools are enforcing two miles, maybe like the Clermont, for example, is nine and a half, based on the school. But for us, it's, it could help us eliminate one of our most dangerous stops. It's, I can't tell you how many cars pull through my red lights through the intersection, and these kids have to cross our road. No matter where we move it to, we've always had this issue within that radius. And all these locations all have sidewalks, uh, for me to suggest the one mile is easier, just for... We don't have a lot of sidewalks. I can't say less than four is a two mile, because I don't feel comfortable with kids walking. For us, to do like a mile, I feel a little better, because we're in town, it's a little more easier access. But yes, there are exceptions to that, which I totally understand, parents can call us, hey, my child needs this because of this. I can take it on a case-by-case basis, after a valid, we do those stops. Because every bus stop we do has to be evaluated, we didn't send it into the state for approval.
So if we approve it, and someone needs it, then they can contact you, but they're within that one mile radius?
Yes, we do make certain exceptions based on what the needs are. Yeah, if they walk outside the house and do the sidewalk that's perfectly maintained, this right there, there's no reason for a bus. Especially if they live, I'd say fifty yards or a hundred yards from the school, we still pick them up, there was no reason for it, it's taking us out of our way, that we'll get them dropped at all. It's, certain things like that, it's, we're trying to eliminate, to make it easier for us to get the kids to school on time.
For efficiencies and, that makes sense. And the law is two miles, and we're cutting that in half to one mile, so it's not like we're, yes, Mr. Jones. On Caleb's support, there's also places in town where the sidewalks don't get plowed until after the kids hit. Sometimes till after they've been dismissed from schools in the afternoon and all that, so he's gotta be alert to that, and that's where the P and D and drive us. And, and we need to be picking those kids up too, we can't leave them to walk in the road to get to school, for example. I've seen that a lot.
And I think that would make for a really great conversation for us to have with the town, right, that now we're going with this, so can you please make sure that specific roads are, are, I mean, sidewalks are plowed, because our kids are now required to walk. Right, and so I think that they would be, it would be due diligence and take care of that stuff.
I agree with you.
So at one point, I think about a year or two ago, the town's actually used to make our bus routes sidewalks priority for school. And lately it's just, I am saying that maybe short-staffed, um, I'm hoping that we can eventually get back to that way again. They used to have all the sidewalks cleared, our bus routes done, before we even hit the road. I'm hoping that we can eventually get back to that same way again.
Makes sense. All right, so do I have a motion? Second it. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to, uh, do our radius, or change our transportation route radius to one mile for, um, walker slash rider? Riding two?
Riders.
Rider's. One mile or more for, to be eligible to ride the bus. Five seconds.
Oh, you said that, yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right, motion passes to implement a one-mile radius for bus route.
Thank you.
Next, we have item E, budget adjustments.
So can you, in your packet you should have the budget adjustments, as we usually do every month, if you have any questions. And can you answer this for you?
Do I have a motion?
I remove general entry two ninety-two. At, uh, two hundred and fifty-two thousand one thirty-two.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppo, aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.
And just an explanation for the listeners, it's money taken from here and put over into here, it's just moving it into other things, it's hard to adjust. To have numbers that come out precise in the course of a year, um, where there might be savings here, you take it over here where it's needed. And so it is an equal amount, it's, uh, two hundred and fifty-two thousand one thirty-two as a debit, and two hundred and fifty-two one thirty-two as a credit.
Thank you. Mr. Spalding?
Taking the money out of the right pocket, putting it in the left.
All right, next we have superintendent permission to employ for June, July, and August.
I'm asking the school board to grant me permission to employ staff over the summer months, the rest of June, all of July and August, and I still send you the information as I currently do.
Is that with the, like, forty-eight hour caveat?
Yeah, that's usually what I do, I'll send you that, the cover letter and their resume, and do the same thing.
Motion. Mr. Beard makes a motion to approve the superintendent permission to employ for the remaining... That's what I'm talking about. Do we have any discussion?
Just to be clear, we do this, we do this annually.
Yes, this is annual, this isn't the first time we've... All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right, motion passes.
Jeez, I think we've been running long this evening, huh?
Yes, professional development plan.
Sure, as you're aware, our professional development plan has been expired for a few years. This year a committee was formed to redo the plan. The plan was sent to you for you to review. I'm gonna turn this over to Bryn Payne to discuss the changes. We are looking to have this approved this evening, so we can send it to the DOE for their approval, so it can go into effect this upcoming school year. So I can let Bryn talk to you a little bit about the changes and about the committee that met to, um, put this together.
Yeah, so as Donna said, uh, the last plan was written in two thousand and fifteen, um, and it goes for five years, and so we were two years out of date. So that was one of the first things I started working on when I got here. The team that met was a combination of teachers, administrators, para, professionals, related services, um, pretty much every stakeholder group, um, to get their input. We had some really good conversations, um, and, um, came up with the plan that you have in front of you. I'm just gonna summarize real quick, um, this plan is really focused on job embedded activities for staff. Instead of having them go to workshops and that kind of stuff that's more formal, um, focusing on job embedded activities, and that's really where the state wants us to go to. So that way they're, they're getting professional development hours and credit for things they're already doing on a daily basis. And I'm just gonna point on, direct you to page twenty-nine, on this page there is, there are examples of what that means. I don't, there's a whole bunch of them. So it could be looking at student work, and it could be a book talk, it could be, um, committees that they might be on. There's a lot of different things that could fall under job embedded activities. They can still go to workshops and stuff, but that's not gonna be the focus on how they get their hours. Speaking of hours, people are gonna have the opportunity to choose to do either a portfolio or to focus on getting those hours. This makes it so that it's more growth-based, so they're looking, they're setting a goal, um, they're doing things throughout their three years of their cycle to reach that goal. And then they're showing proof and evidence of that growth. So basically, they're gonna have to have artifacts every year, they're gonna have to have activity summaries for what they've done throughout that year. They're gonna have to show evidence of their learning and how that's impacted student learning, and then they're gonna have to, um, do reflections also. It's not a lot of work to do that, because it could, it's more meaningful. They're not having to do it for every little thing that they do. On page eighteen, there's a rubric that kind of outlines the artifacts, so that way it's really clear as to what they're supposed to have, and what qualifies as a, an effective portfolio, and what might not be. Also, on a few pages later, there's a rubric for recertification, um, because at the end of their three years, it shows exactly what they're gonna have to do and what they should have in order to be, um, recommended for recertification, because we don't necessarily say, oh yeah, you're recertified. We recommend, Donna recommends them to the state, and that's how they're gonna be certified. Lastly, we have purchase frontline, I know we've talked about that before. This is gonna be an online platform where all staff can keep track of their goals, um, any professional development that they do, many courses they take. They don't necessarily get a paper certificate anymore, all of their stuff is right on this online platform, and so that, it just makes it all really streamlined and easy to take care of. Right now they put everything in binders that can be like this thick, and it, it takes a lot of time to look through them and to create them, and, um, this is gonna be more meaningful and, um, focused in what their goal is, so. That's the gist, short and sweet.
One of the good things about this is with having frontline, when they, they can put their professional development in, so we'll, what will happen is at the beginning of the, the year, they will have to come up with a goal, and their goal could be for the three years. And so they sit down, they write what their goal is, and their goal has to be something that's focused around what our goals are here in the district, as well as the building goals. And, which usually line up. Then they could do their, those activities, workshops, and then they put it into frontline. So what ends up happening is the building principals now sit with them and say, okay, I'm looking at your goal, what are your plans to meet these goals? And they have those discussions, and at the end of the year... And they have those discussions, and at the end of the year, they sit down again with them, and they look at their stuff that they've done and said, okay, what have you accomplished this year, what are some of the things that you've done this year? And it really helps keep a teacher on track, because what ends up happening, I can tell you that, because we see this a lot right now, after three years, everybody doesn't have their stuff, and so what they're doing is they're going to other teachers and say, hey, remember that workshop that we went to, you know, like two years ago? Do you have the certificate for that? You know, and then they're trying to put it together, and then the building principals are getting binders that are this big, and they have to go through every single one of them with the staff member in order to send something to us saying, yes, they've met their hours. So this way, it's right online, and it's easier for them, and if someone was to leave a district and come here, we can take that information and put it right into Frontline. It just, it streamlines the process, it's going to make it a lot easier, easier for us, there's going to be more accountability with putting your stuff in. You know, when we have workshops, we put them in to Frontline, and the staff can sign up for them, sometimes we'll just automatically sign them up, so they're getting their hours every year.
I'm glad that we're using Frontline, so I'm new to using it, but I do think that it streamlines the process. You mentioned that these embedded activities are going to kind of take place of maybe going and doing a traditional off-campus workshop, but will those still be...
Could take the place.
Okay, but if a teacher wanted to go do something, that would still be supported?
Oh, yeah, yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
As long as it goes towards their goal.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And then is, will they build their portfolio on Frontline?
So there'll be a form, the forms are not completed yet, because we're still in the process of doing those, but there'll be a form, like if they go do an activity, the activity summary that I referred to, there'll be a form for that that they fill out. There'll be a form for evidence of learning, and there'll be a separate form for reflection. So it'll be really easy to see, oh yeah, you have the five that are required. Yeah.
And if someone, like, when I do mine, I know I do mine different, but when, prior to, you have to do 45 hours for the state, and then 35 hours for each certification you have, so I have five certifications. And so doing it on Frontline, I can specify that I want it to go towards this certification, and then I can track it right on Frontline, so it'll show me, you know, principal, and it'll show me how many hours I have towards that. Superintendent, how many hours I have towards that. Teacher, how many hours I have towards that. So it tracks all my hours for me, so I know, I know what...
But with this plan, you don't necessarily have to track hours anymore.
Right, if I do the other way.
I know when you first brought up Frontline when you were here, that we've actually had it in the district for a while, but it hadn't been used, so is there going to be staff training on this at like the beginning of the year, especially in the past?
Yeah, so we've kind of had a soft rollout, where people have started, I've been holding after-school sessions that, I don't know, a couple dozen people have attended, just so they can get an idea of what it's going to take, which isn't a lot.
No, it's not the most user-friendly website, I will say.
Yeah, no, it takes getting used to, but, so that, and also, all of our PDs since January, I've put in, and so people have gone in to sign up, they've practiced that. So it's been a soft opening, but they will get more PD in the fall.
And then for any teacher that has their binder of stuff, can that be embedded into Frontline for them archived?
You do a bulk, submit a bulk.
There's historical forms, I think they have from previous years within this cycle.
That make sense to you gentlemen?
That's good to be.
And then, obviously, you guys will track this.
Yes, we do.
And it makes it, this should make it easier for y'all to just be able to certify. That's also for people who are probably on SOEs as well, right? Or is it a different...
They'll still do their stuff, but yeah, but the building principals will still meet with them, and they'll be able to see where they're at.
Okay. So do you need us...
Is it fair to say that teachers are creating their own report card?
No, no.
Well, certifications, things that they want.
Right, but they have to, they have to choose from what our goals are, and then their activities, once they put them in, they have to be approved. So their building administrator would have to approve them doing that activity.
So you'd have to check the sign-in roster to make sure that they actually did go to that class on PD day?
Yes, so if I went, if I went to a workshop on STEM, and I'm, well, STEM kind of goes with everything, so, but if I went to a, I don't even, basket weaving.
Basket weaving?
Yeah, so if I went to, if I said I wanted to go to a workshop on basket weaving, my building principal could deny that and say, no, and then I don't get the day off, and I don't get to go to basket weaving. And then, but if I do something, if I sign up for, you know, STEAM or STEM, then they can approve me to go to that. So it's, it's a way for, for the building principal to actually track, in a sense, where they're going and making sure that they're doing stuff that is towards what the school goals are, as well as towards what their, you know, current teaching position is.
Pardon me for this, but in a layperson, that's important. It's the next step I'm handling. Tells what he does. All right, I got it.
All right, so do you need us to approve the master plan?
Yes, so that way we can submit it to the state.
Do I have a motion to...
Send it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
We'll send that tomorrow, they're probably going to be surprised if you... We thought they were gone.
Summer meeting schedule?
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure. So in the motion, may I put down the SAU 43 Newport School District Professional Growth Master Plan 2023-2028 in the motion?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. My board members are cutting me off whenever, before I finish them, I like the...
We don't want to get hit with a hammer again.
All right, so the summer meeting schedule, we have...
Yes, so as it, as we, as we go through the summer, our normal days are the second and fourth, Thursday of every month, so this, for July, would be the 13th and the 27th, and for August, it would be the 10th and the 24th. A lot of districts don't have meetings during the summer, that's why they often give the building, I mean, the superintendent permission to hire, and I, so I didn't know if you guys wanted to cut it down to one, or if you wanted to have zero, that's up to you, how you want to handle that. And I don't know, I don't know as far as vacations go and who will be around, so...
I will probably be out of pocket at the end of August, the 24th, I won't be able to make that one. I'll be driving, probably within the...
I haven't scheduled my going back yet.
I don't know, I think that we could probably have one meeting a month, or put one right in the middle, or, I don't know. I'm open for discussion.
I would say, leave July alone. We have got the bus barn issue to solve, and it seems to be taking up a lot of time and a lot of energy, and we've got to get it done.
Yeah, I guess my response to that would be, I think we keep the meeting, but remember, we don't have a date yet from them, so maybe we keep it for the 13th, and if we have a... Yeah, because I mean, by the 13th, we should also have more information on the CTE. So I say we, we keep the 13th, and have a conditional date for the 27th if needed. Well, no, you know what I mean, like it might be more productive if we have it on the 27th versus the 13th, depending on when we get that back from the town, because they, they didn't set a date to get it back to us.
Well, we thought the CTE was going to be a cakewalk, and it's not.
That's true.
So if we do 13th, definite, and 27th on there, but we throw it away, we don't need it.
That sounds good to me, conditional.
So...
Yes, did you have your head up?
Yes, go ahead. So are you thinking that on the 13th, have on the agenda the July 27th meeting, and then we can discuss it on the 13th meeting if we're going to have the 27th? Are you talking at, like, days before the, the week of July 27th, I have the conversation and see who's going to be, you know, if we're going to have that meeting like we've done before? That would be the question. Or we on the 13th?
I think if the town comes back prior to the 13th, it would behoove us to meet with the town before then, so maybe I'm being overly optimistic, but maybe we'll get to it before then. But I think we can still have, we can just check in on the meeting on the 13th if we have it, and see if we need the 27th.
Yeah, what we wound up with, 13?
13?
13 items.
How'd you get 13? There was 12 when we left at 9:30 this morning.
Oh, he added the heat and the...
I know, but I had that for 12. I trust you, but...
13 is to get the first 12 done, I'll say.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm going to be optimistic that, that we'll be able to talk about the bus barn on the 13th. My question, my other question was about handbook approval, to get those done before the beginning of the year, and what your goal was to get those to the board.
Well, I can work with the team, if we're not going to be, if we're meeting August 10th, I can shoot for an August 10th date, since Steve's not here, the 24th. I can talk my team and see if they can have the handbooks all done by August 10th, for August 10th, well, the week prior to, because I sent them to you before, but with the page that says any changes on...
Any other discussion from... All right, so...
I think there needs to be an action.
Yeah, I don't think there needs to be any action, because this is usually a discussion that we don't vote on. Okay, so then, well, subject, no other discussion, we'll move on to item I, Zoom for 2023/2024.
So I'd like to propose that we no longer have our meetings using Zoom. We don't usually have anyone logging on, and we do have NCTV that comes in and do all of our recordings. Now, obviously, if something comes up and we need to do that, then we could, but I think for the purpose of our meetings, we don't really need it, because we never have anybody on.
I agree. I make sure my Thursday nights are open, so you have to keep them.
Just log on and see if you're logging on to NCTV. If, if somebody could not get here to make public comments, and didn't want to submit a letter, would the board be open to turning the Zoom on for a meeting for that person to be able to speak?
I think if they contact us ahead of time.
Prior to the meeting.
I think that this board has been fairly clear over the last couple of years to try to encourage participation, so, but I think that that would probably be a caveat, that maybe we put on the bottom, like in the thing, if you cannot participate, I'd like to...
Zoom was just a COVID thing, you know? We got rid of it at the zoning board, or people had to have to show up to it to present, so I guess you could technically zoom in, but you can't be the person presenting, they have to be there. I just don't feel like, especially here, we probably, we never have anyone, people watching NCTV, which is better set up anyways, so...
Do we add something?
We haven't had many people.
That's true.
Issues, issues bring them up, and so we've been on a school shift.
Well, I say that we just capture it in tonight's minutes, that if anybody needs or would like to participate, and for whatever reason can't get here to contact either the superintendent, or me, or Jenna, and we will schedule and do our best to make sure that they can participate. Because I don't think it would need, and even if we have to, we could do it before the meeting starts, a vote to approve turning Zoom on for someone to participate, but I don't think we would, I don't think we'd need that.
No, can't be here, then it's not very important.
So do we need to vote to stop utilizing?
Yeah, I'll move that we no longer utilize Zoom for participation.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
Can I just ask a question? So it says for the 23-24 school year, technically that starts July 1. Do we want to wait until September, or will July 1 be the end?
That'll be the last thing.
Darn.
Mr. Chick?
Yes, ma'am.
Wanted to say, in the minutes, could I put a generic, let's see, website or telephone number for people to call?
I would put in the...
SAU office.
SAU office number.
Which is...
And they can actually speak to my executive assistant, Melissa Small, if they want, if they wanted to go on, and she would make sure that we, that we get that.
All right, J, Data Governance Manual, Discussion on Non-Public Safety Measures, so we're going to...
Yes.
...belay that until later?
Yeah, well, so this is a safety plan that I want to discuss in non-public, however it needs to get voted on, we may have to come out of non-public, go back into public and vote on it to move it forward, so I just wanted to make people aware, because I know sometimes we come out of non-public and there's nothing to vote on, that there's possibly going to be something to vote on.
So with that, we're not going to take action on it yet, now we're going to move to new hires. I was in the addition on adjustments to, and I will turn it over.
I'll leave it to the purview of the board, do you want me to do this individually or in bulk?
Bulk's fine, I think. Save time.
All right. I will move Jill Beaman, Middle School Math, oh, no, I will not, I apologize. I will move, it's been circled and I messed it up. Amber Mills for Middle School Math, MA Step 1, $39,653. Diana Cathcart for Middle School Family and Consumer Science, BA plus 15, Step 5, $43,476. Ed Oberhoffer for Middle School Assistant Principal, MA plus 15, $73,500. Heather Vitale, Masters, Step 6, this is for elementary grade 3, $45,853. Paul Stoddard, Automotive Teacher, BA Step 10, $48,539. And Candace McGurk, Masters, Step 8, this would be a preschool teacher, $48,333.
I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Congratulations to our new hires, welcome to the team. Yes, sir.
I'd just like to make an NCTV announcement, because the volume's been really tricky. Just for the people who are watching on TV, it's working on everywhere but our television, but we just had our entire, our hardware computer re-imaged, and the volume was at zero, so that's why that problem is, so after this, after today's program, I will up that, and it should be balanced more properly, but I just wanted people who are watching, I wonder why they had to crank their TV way up. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Yes.
I just, I'm all for new teachers, but it's nice to see teachers with experience coming to new work, so.
You guys found an auto teacher finally.
Yes, we do.
All right, so resignations?
Yes, so unfortunately... Yes, so unfortunately, I have a few resignations for this evening. In my middle school, I have a PE teacher and an English teacher that will be leaving. At the high school, I have a special education teacher. Each one of the teachers that resigned, financially, their pay will be between $10,000 to $20,000 more at the district that they're moving to. One of them is $15,000 and she's actually moving to Unity, which is a lot smaller school. And yes, so. It's very sad that that's happening, but I can understand where they're coming from. They're making the money where they're going. And they all said it was a very hard choice. I think you have their letters in there, these two of them, one I haven't, I didn't really get yet, but you have their letters in there. And they're talking about it was a very hard choice for all of them.
Okay, unfortunate. I'd like to know the numbers now corrected for the departures to get an idea of this year compared to last and before. So a three-year reading.
For the last few years?
It's a E for this year?
But for when?
Resign, that resignation.
Oh, I'll have to, I'll have to pull it out. Not as it here.
Yeah, I think it's.
It sounds great.
I think it was about eight.
Yeah.
I think last year was like 30 plus.
Yeah.
Yes, but I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to see it actually on on paper. Because the big 30 is is very high compared we are now. Now, if we're gonna put weight in that number, we need to know that that number is firm as opposed to. So we make it, let's make it, make it four years so we can get a track history to look at it. And I'll speak to that again. If the teachers aren't leaving, maybe we're doing something right. And even in the money situation, some people make a decision that it's just money, it's other things.
We did have one teacher that was offered more money and decided to stay. That was nice.
But I have to put this in there, though, that I think that is the reason more often than not that we lose candidates for multiple positions. And I think if the change that we want to create here, we do need to look at it, okay? We did it successfully for our air professionals and support staff. And I know that salary is a huge portion of our of our budget. But if we want to have the eight or less resignations, I think pay would be a good place to start to look at.
And the good news is, is that.
Can I add to that?
The union accepted the open up negotiations. Just got that correspondence from the union?
Oh, I didn't get it. Who's gonna talk about that?
Am I not supposed to say it out loud? I didn't know that was a secret.
No, I don't know if it is.
That, that part, probably not.
That's probably not, no.
It's not secret either way now.
No, it's fine.
If I did, I I need to do better if that was, but I apologize.
I don't, I don't know if it is or if it isn't. I just know it has to do with negotiations, that's why I put it in. But it doesn't. People are gonna know anyway, so. But I I think that one of the things since we. I think that one of the things that I also want to to make sure that people are aware of is it is not the teachers that have approached the board to ask to open up the the contracts for pay. It is the board that has been, is reaching out to the teachers. And I think that's different, right? So I don't want that to come across that there. They're trying to get more money or anything like that. It's it's us saying, can we have this opportunity to look at your pay? And and they've agreed to that, so.
Can I, can I go back to my request? Can we make it four years on the support staff also?
Yep.
Get a better picture. Is that a big task or easy?
Not for me, so no. Sally Mike.
Your part's easy, all right.
My part's really easy.
Yeah, she's really good at it, so.
Do you have another question? Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to committee report outs. We kind of already reported out on the status of the bus barn. Reported out on the status of the CTE, our big item. So I don't know, is there any other committees? Hearing none, then we will move on to policies. First read, none. We'll go down to D for second read revised. A, we have data governance and security, and that's the one.
No, these are the only second read to be approved, so these have been in the works for a little while.
I almost got confused with item J.
Plus we just meant the other different policies.
All right, so do we have any discussions on data governance and security? EHAB. I mean, I will say, as being on the policy committee, we have expanded it out to where building principals and as well as the point of contact or the manager of said section comes and participates. And we kind of go line by line through what the recommendations are based on new law changes coming out of the New Hampshire School Board Association. And so it's not that we don't only do that, we look at that, but then we have some in-depth discussions with principals and the primary. Like I can, like a lot of this has to do with Mr. Howell of data security. So he basically led us through those. And so I'm confident, based on these changes, that it reflects what our employees need out of these policies, if that makes sense. If that means anything to you with my feedback on as a committee report out, but I just say this for for here because it is a lot more thorough than the way we have done in the past. And I greatly appreciate that.
I would say I wish I could still be on the policy committee to see it run that way because I think it's takes the pressure off, right?
A lot, that's what I was telling her.
Two people, two board members sitting in a room trying to make a decision to bring to the rest of the board and to staff, so.
All right, so do we need to take a vote on these?
Yep.
So do we want to do them in batch? I mean, I just, I just mentioned EHAB data governance, but they're all, the top three kind of go in together with the EHBS. So if we want to do it separately, do y'all have any discussion? Like, we can take a motion and discuss or? Or I can make a motion to accept all four policies as provided?
Unless somebody has something specific to a policy, are you willing to move all four policies in a batch?
Second.
I don't see anything to argue about.
Second.
All right, so just for more, I'm gonna move policy EHAB, data governance and security. EHB, data records retention and destruction. EHBR, local board, local record retention schedule. And JFAB, admission of tuition and non-resistorative students.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
One abstention. All right. On that note, we'll turn it over to discussion administration.
Sure, so I'd like to give a heartfelt thank you to all the staff. This year has been a tough year and they came to work with a smile on their face and worked hard to give each student an amazing education. I could not be more proud to be part of such an amazing team. I'd also like to thank the families because I know this has been a hard year for them. I want to make sure that everyone knows that we are putting things in place to make sure our students, staff and parents have a better year next year. One of the big words that we will be using next year is a word called accountability. Everyone will be held accountable for their actions. I'd also like to mention that we'll be having a bullying forum and a cell phone forum during the summer. So over the summer, our admin team will be working with an outside team to look at all of our policies and procedures and make the necessary changes to go along with the law. We will also be looking at how we handle investigations and making sure we're doing everything within the scope of the law. We will then bring families together to discuss these changes and look for their feedback. So that's for our bullying policies. We actually had a meeting today and it was actually really great how we could look at our policy. And, you know, he was able to show where our policy is not really in line with what the law reads or the RSA reads, so. His name is Harrison from LTL Consultants. We'll be doing more training with him, we have another one next week. Really looking at streamlining our process, putting checklists together, putting flow charts together so it's easier for parents to see how it works. Really talking about what is the definition of bullying and what components have to be in place in order for something to be bullying. Having a sheet that if if somebody says, you know, it's been bullying, the parent will get a form that says if it's not, why it's not. So really looking at streamlining these forms. And as well as making it a lot easier on the staff. Because the staff, you know, at one point, I think they were doing eight or nine bullying investigations. And some of them were not really bullying investigations, you know? Because we get reports, if, if, right now, the way our policy reads, and we'll be bringing this to the policy committee, is that if a, if a lot of times, if it, if somebody says bullying, we do an investigation. So if, you know, like for instance, I got somebody that called and said, well, when my daughter was at this event, the student was staring at her and so she's bullying her. Right, and so they actually had to do an investigation on that. And so it's just taking away some of that stuff. So I think it'll be streamlined. It doesn't mean that it's right or wrong, right? Just because a bullying is not founded, doesn't mean that somebody is not getting a consequence because you can still get a consequence for your behavior. It just doesn't go up to the level of bullying. And so I think having those discussions with parents and and having them understand our process and how it works and how the law works. We're also gonna be having a forum regarding cellphone use in our buildings. This year, we've noticed a lot of issues that have arisen with cellphones and their misuse. We're working on a policy and procedures that will eliminate the issue to allow our students to be educated without the constant distraction and disruption. And so our goal with the forums is to gain parent, is to gain parent, guardian and community support. We cannot run a school without the support of everyone. And then I also wanted to thank the select board for the meeting, for meeting with us this morning. And looking forward to our continuing meetings and discussions.
Anybody from your hat?
Well, yeah, I have, I guess, is, I mean, I talked about the PD plan already, but all of the curriculum that we've been ordering is starting to come in. So there's been pallets of materials showing up at school, so that's exciting. Yeah. And we're still ordering.
Yeah, I'd love to. So like Bryn was talking about the curriculum when it comes to, you know, regular classrooms. I think another thing that we've looked at pretty extensively over the last couple of weeks especially is our specially designed instruction and what interventions, research-based interventions that folks have and have access to that they can implement with fidelity in order to show growth. And so we did a kind of a needs assessment, we were able to take a look at what folks have and then create like a, you know, what do we need in order to give kids what they need? So, you know, we've been working pretty hard on that so that we can try to get some some good materials into folks' hands for the start of the year. And then I think along with that, just looking at our systems and our structures, which we've been doing all year really, but getting to a spot so that this summer in future planning, everyone can hit the ground running with like a solid, like this is how we're gonna do things. And, you know, they'll have the information to start and it will all be strategically organized. And along with that, like different roles, not necessarily different roles, but defining roles and defining systems within the student services department, I think is hugely needed. And so that's something that we've started working on and can finish up for the summer so that we can be in a really good spot come September.
I also want to add that we, because of all the systems and stuff that's been put in place and our our student service team has been working really hard, our indicator 13 came back and we are at 100% compliance, which that has not been that way in the past.
For the laypeople out there?
I'll let Kerry explain that, will you?
So indicator 13, so there's indicators in the specialty process, there's, there's 17 total, I think. But indicator 13 specifically talks about transition, so transition services for for kiddos. It starts at age 14, so, you know, our middle school really should be starting looking at transition. Where do you see yourself, like where are you going, what's your plan? Similar to Bryn's talk about PD and setting a goal, right? Same idea, you know, where do you see yourself, here's your goal. Now, as a team, what's backwards plan, how are you gonna meet that goal? What is that gonna look like? And so really working with kids and parents and teachers to really define that. The state really has us looking at defining that very specifically. Whereas in the past, you know, years ago, it was never really a specific thing. It was like, oh, well, I may want to do this and then that was it. Now you really have to connect all the dots, like, okay, so I want to, you know, get a job and I want to be, you know, an auto mechanic. Okay, well, how are you gonna do that? What specific classes are you gonna take in order to line up to that? What outside transitional, transition opportunities do you need? Community supports, things like that. And it goes all the way, like I said, from, it starts in the middle school and goes through high school. And then in your senior year or age 22, you should have, you know, a a meeting where you kind of review all of these different pieces. And kids leave with like a statement like, this is what I've done and this is where I'm going. And so there's a lot of work that goes into it. And, you know, we've, we've definitely done some work this year. We were, we were very thankful, I had, we had a case manager at a high school who has a very solid understanding of indicator 13 and she was able to help out. But we have, working on adopting an actual plan that teachers can follow and 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 staff can follow to kind of walk them through this entire process. Because it's pretty lengthy and it includes a lot of education and training that folks need. So there'll be more to come on it, but we were able to move ourselves this year into the 100%, which is huge.
Sure, so of course, I've been working on budget-related issues. Our $20 million budget is down to about $164,000 left to close up the year. We're working on finalizing, getting final bills in for everything that is committed to or outstanding. And then we've got a few things mostly related to transportation with, once now that we've got a 99-year lease, we can start doing some, some improvements there along with, we're still ordering. We've got a little bit more curriculum, supplies and materials to to purchase and some safety equipment as well. So that'll bring our budget balance down to pretty close to zero for the end of the year. The good news, though, is on the revenue side. After making adjustments for some accounts receivable, mainly for the career tech center tuition from the ascending schools, we will have a budget surplus in revenue of about $218,000. And it could be a few other little things that trickle in and make that a little higher. So that, we don't, we don't spend surplus in revenue, so that has to go back as surplus to reduce the taxes in October.
Every, any counts?
Yes.
Awesome, I appreciate that feedback. I'll go around the board.
That, what sounds like additional money, is that gonna help towards the floor and everything in the bus garage?
Yeah, we're, we're trying to make sure that we, we close out the year, making sure we take care of that.
Okay, great.
But not the, not the revenue, right?
The revenue does not contribute to that.
No, I understand that.
How much money, to what extent?
For what?
For the excess that would be possibly available of the available.
So the $164,000 that's left in the budget. So the $164,000 that's left in the budget, most of that is available to close out things like improvements to the bus barn and the improvements that we've been working on for curriculum. A lot of that's been at the elementary level.
Middle school?
It's a lot, the middle and, yeah.
Can that be narrowed down so we get a closer number as to how much of that, other than 164? Take the others away and just get to the bus barn part of it?
Oh, sure. So what we've been working on for prices is doing the cement floor, which would be $30,000 to $35,000. That, our plan for that is just a cement floor. We understand that without it, if you don't, it is not required under code, to our knowledge, to put a drain. If you don't put a drain, you don't need a separator. If you have a drain, then we would need to have a separator, which is very expensive. That'll be more money than the cement floor. So we're, I'm working with our architect, with the CTE, to get that answer, to make sure that what our requirements would be for that. So once we get that answer and we've got things settled with the town, we can move forward and put in the cement floor. So that's about $30,000 to $35,000. We've talked about an office box or trailer that would be outside the building that could be, that we could purchase in around $15,000 and get that set up. And then there's the electrical, separating that from the town in the $5,000 to $7,000 range to put our own box and meter in, our own, and then $5,000 for, oh, to install. We have a heating system in the auto shop at the Career Tech Center. That is going to be obsolete because they're tying it into the larger system. So we're going to be able to take one of those heating units and relocate it to the bus barn to put some heat into that. So in order to move that and get it hooked up and install about five, again, $5,000 to $7,000. So $60,000 to $80,000 should really make some major improvements.
Will that take care of heating the office on the outside?
That would be a separate, that would, we would just hook that into a small electric heater.
Well, if we, if we don't, if we heat the barn inside, we're going to have a water problem because you're going to have no power. And so if we're going to have a cold barn, most of that will stay on, on the buses. So putting heat into that building is not only the expense, the fuel, but what to do with the water. And if you can, if you have a pad that comes into the center, you can sop it up and take the pale outside and dump it as opposed to taking it through a system, which to me is not that expensive. It is a central or a couple of down the center drains to take that water out to a holding tank.
So we'll work with our architect to make sure we've got a system design that'll work fine and whether it be with a separator or not, we'll work through her engineer.
All right. Well, I think I would ask the DES regulations on that.
We'll be checking all of that before we spend any money on it.
Okay, I got that and I expect that. But I also say that there's many ways to skin a cat and some of them are very expensive. So we need alternatives. They say you have a holding tank, okay? What do we have to have a holding tank? Pick a five gallon drum? Oh, no, you could have a 1,000 gallon tank, all right? So what does it cost us to get 1,000 gallon pumped out as opposed to a 2,000 that you can't get done because there's nobody, it carries 2,000 at one time? So we need to look at these expenses so we'll get more longevity out of the money. So heating it lowers the cost of electricity because they're not plugged in in that case. So we transfer, we lower this one and raise it over here. What we, what we need to do, that at a reasonable cost as opposed to somebody saying it's, well, into the tens of thousands of dollars, it's not necessary. Okay? So my point, Ed, would be that it takes, I want to see how it's being done, I guess, before it's done, before the concrete is poured. Now, I talked with someone today about floors. If we are going to do the entire thing, then we're looking at a six inch floor. We're not looking at a three. And a three particularly in a cold barn won't work. So if we do six, we've got a forever floor. And that's real expensive, so I don't know what your price is for. Six is expensive with three bar. So can we talk on that as we go on?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So just make sure you reach out to the Transportation Committee. You, I think all, three of y'all are on there at some point of some form.
There's a fear that way we don't.
Now, unfortunately, I saw a camper. We were at Pizza Place and here comes this camper going by with free on the side of it. You know, F-R-E-E. And someone was taking it away. Where were we?
We have a new office.
Should have just dropped my sandwich, got out there and got in the car and gone. I could have given him twice his money and he would probably have been happy. So something like that would do. All we need is a place to be and some warmth and a place to do their paperwork and et cetera.
Honestly, we brought the idea of converting one of the school buses into an office.
And the question, another question.
Could maybe do that.
Do we have eight feet in the center to replace what's already there?
My personal opinion is where we currently have the office now, at the whole facility there would be the best location due to the fact that where we currently store the buses and how we store them is a puzzle and it's easier to manipulate smaller vehicles around that office in the front than it is in the middle. Because the way the buses back in, they have to kitty corner in and swing hard if you're there.
Could we replace what's there and get all of what we need in one unit?
Possibly. I mean, we need it just a little bit longer, you could possibly get away with it. Because we currently use our sides as, as for example, for mechanic tools, supplies. So that stuff's out of the way. So there is potentially, if we do extend it just a little bit, we might be able to get away with it.
Okay, and I'd like to ask one more question. Right now, you don't use tire bumpers for the back ends. Am I correct on that?
We currently have tires lined up in the back. Active guys are bumpers.
Okay. So if we do a cement floor, we build the bumpers in so we, so they back in to a field of resistance as opposed to wall. You're looking at a mirror, you're looking 35 feet back. And if we don't do that, then we can put sensors in that determine the position of the bus to stop and an audio sound to stop. And that way we won't have a bus driver that keeps going until he's out in the parking lot. So Ed, we, now that we can see the light at the end of the tunnel and we know it's not the train, we can think about the other things that make life easier and better.
Thank you, Michelle.
I just want to thank all the employees, especially maintenance, because I didn't mention them last time, but someone's like, hey, you mentioned us. For a great year and all their hard work, especially Dave offloaded some, well, 200 two-by-fours with a Skidsey the other day. I told him I never had an opinion of whether it was good we had it or not, but I was like, I'm very much in favor of it now because he just saved me a lot of work trying to get them off of there. But graduation was great. It worked out. We made the right, well, I didn't have anything to do with it, but the district made the right decision switching the day and I think it was beautiful there in graduation and so I look forward to next year.
Thank you, Tim.
Anything else, Michelle?
I was just thinking, I got a lot of one-by-threes off of all of those modular units going through. And I've got enough, we call it duck wood because we have a little duck bone to keep. And so I got more than enough of that. Maybe I could give away some one-way trays.
Make a chicken coop out of it?
Build a office for them.
A screened-in porch that's, you know, just for one year or something like that. Got to find a use.
All right. May I go because I need to head out, but I want to say one thing before I leave. So you mentioned the cellphone thing and because it's quite possible, I won't be here at a meeting to discuss it, I want to say this much, good luck. Good luck. It's, it's something I've had discussions with many students, many staff members about and the conclusion that I've come to in my mind is that these things are some of the most addictive things that you will ever come across. And trying to rip them from our students with rules in a handbook that, quite frankly, none of them are going to read, I'm sorry, but I've never seen someone read through it, is the same as, the same as trying to rip Americans of their First or Second Amendment. It's going to be a battle that they're not going to give in. You're going to fight it for years to come and I commend all of you that are going to be putting in the effort to make it happen because I've been on both sides of the coin. I've been in classes where I've complained about kids being on their phone and I've been in classes where I've sat on my phone all class and not done my work. You can ask Ed Oberhauffer about that, it was his class. But I commend you guys for trying to make something happen and I think you need the best of luck on it and I hope that you guys can find something that will work because there's some happy medium in there. I just don't personally know where that is, so I can't help you too much on that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. I was, key word, was, for it not happening and I started research on it and it appears there's almost an equal educational asset in it as there is what it inhibits. So if we could have the children, people, small, young adults carry it, use it respectfully and educationally and not to use it as a way of creating a problem. In other words, getting other kids to come to a fight or whatever it might be. So we've got a scale here in front of us. It has an educational value for life. You learn how to use one of those things, you get on there, you buy things cheaper than you could somewhere else, you can learn all kinds of stuff that you can. It replaces the encyclopedia completely and then so. But then it has its downside. So the question is, how do we do that? And so you hit the nail on the head. How do you do that? So somebody has got to tell us and I actually did a law today and I found the law and it, that they, they knew that they changed and it's woefully inadequate. Doesn't even begin to touch the issue.
It's woefully inadequate out in the legislature.
Don't we make computers available to all of our students? Then they don't need the cell phones. Well, you have that, that's what we're having the discussion earlier. You're having discussions with people who have studied us more than we have that are going to help advise us and help us come up with a plan that makes sense and that's enforceable and that's consistent.
Correct.
And we'll be getting briefed on that at some point.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Either in July or August, I would expect.
And we'll have forums to talk with families and kids and see what their opinions and thoughts are as well, so.
My hope would be that it is done early enough so that we can get it done.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Whatever it might be because as I came to this board with 211, 211 cannot be solved by bad behavior.
Right.
And if we solve that, it paves a lot of the highway ahead of us. So as a board, we will fail our job if we do not narrow that, narrow in, zero in on our biggest problem, discipline, and our second biggest problem, education. And if we do one, the other one might be easier. So we need to have an objective and get it done. All of the other stuff that we're doing right here is important, but it pales in comparison to the underlying problem. You're going down the road and your car's going thump, thump, thump and your oil light comes on and you keep driving? No. We've got to do something, so I've got another nine months and I want to see something happen. So I came here on 211 and I understand now the cause of 211. I understand the root causes that happened and are still, some that are still present. The administration and teaching staff, I think, is not part of the problem. It lies in what we, the board, aren't making our number one task. So.
I just would like to thank all of our staff of the district. It was not an easy year, but they all did an incredible job from facilities, our bus drivers, certainly our teachers and administrators. I did have a chance on Monday to visit Richards. I was there just to help a friend pack up a room, but I was impressed with the amount he walked in. You'd never know that there were students there just a few days before. So I commend all the work that they were doing. I know that Stephen has left for the night, but I did want to give him my sincerest thanks. I think as far as a student representative goes, we got a knockout right out of the gate. So I look forward to whoever steps into that role in the fall, but they have some pretty big shoes to fill, so, especially when mom brings pizza. And out there, that might be a criteria. But thank you, Stephen, for all that you've done.
I want to thank all of the citizens that showed up last Friday night. And again, they showed up on Monday at the Select Board and I mean, most, if not all of them that were here and on Monday night appeared and not only appeared, some of them made an appearance. Not everybody talked, but I greatly appreciate the support, those who provided feedback not only to us last Friday and I've received feedback by email and in person. That's just, it's greatly appreciated to know that we have the support of the town. Also, just to make mention on Friday, it was an excited meeting, things- Also, just to make mention on Friday, it was a, it was an excited meeting, things happened. I'll never tell anybody what they can or can't say, or anything else like that, so for anybody out there that was concerned about any of the, the actions of the board, we're each responsible for what we do or say, and, you know, I'll just leave it at that. And, I want to also, it was a great experience, it was stressful whenever we talked about delaying graduation. Some students were not very happy with us, and, and I was telling Donna that it worked out for me because of a, a medical thing in my family or whatever, so it worked out that it was delayed, and I was very happy when it started storming. And, not very often am I like, yes! But I was like, because I, because I know how important it was for the seniors to graduate, and I know that, that they had family members here, and it's never an easy call to do that, so it was fortunate for us. And, it was not an easy call for any of the parents out there that don't understand, it was between you and Shannon, and then y'all asked me, and I was like, I don't want to be there. Do I got to be involved in this as well? I, I wore phone calls, but anyway, it was, it worked out for the best, as y'all had mentioned. And I just appreciate the Select Board members that showed up this morning. I feel like we've made progress, and I appreciate you and your staff and the amount of progress in the 12 months that you and mostly everybody else that's a new hire have been here, that we're seeing great, positive steps to ensure that our students' academic achievement is properly reflected, because I am a firm believer, because, you know, I don't know if I told you this, but I taught four years ago, four and a half years ago, as a long-term substitute, but I, you know, I joke around, but I, I know that our proficiencies are better than the test results show, and I feel like getting that curriculum lined up across the board, focusing, not just at elementary, but elementary and middle school is just going to make it a lot easier by the time the students get to high school and the CTE. So, again, thank you very much. And on that note, we will adjourn to non-public with a possible coming back out to vote on the data governance manual, and if that occurs, we will let you know more.
So, I move, we go into non-public under 91-8, colon, 3, Roman numeral 2, under C, D, and I.
All right. Roll call, Luke. Darrell Jones, aye.
Tim Beard, aye.
Bert Spalding, senior.
Jennifer D'Arriaga.
Steve Morris, aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. This concludes the public portion at this time. At this time. Not over.